Good evening. I would like to call the April 6, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to point out that this meeting is being hosted through live stream on the city's website and by teleconference for public comment. Due to the structure of this meeting, I would like to remind the Planning Commission to have their microphones turned on and positioned so the audience can hear. Commissioner, or, I'm sorry, Director King, there we have a roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Lemke?
Here.
Commissioner Beestreffer?
Here.
Vice Chair Van Arsdale?
Here.
Chair Wood?
Here.
Please jump me and stand for indication of address. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be here and serve our community. We pray for wisdom in making decisions and that your will be done. Amen. All right, approval of minutes, was there any comments or changes to the minutes?
No.
Seeing none, entertain a motion for approval.
We have approval of the minutes.
A second.
We have a second?
Can I raise your glasses?
Uh huh.
Okay, thirty.
All right, the minutes passed, five zero. All right, public comment period. Rules of decorum resolution number four five four five. To accommodate public comment, we have made temporary changes to this part of our agenda that were necessitated to comply with COVID-19 directives. There is a temporary two-minute per person time limit for all general public comments on non-public hearing items. All who wish to speak, including commissioners and staff, need to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members of the public shall comply with the adopted rules of decorum, resolution four five four five, a copy of which can be requested through the city clerk's office. You may fill out a form and submit your comments online at www.himmit.ca.gov/councilchamberlive. Submittals must be done before 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. For those that wish to join by teleconference, you may join by calling 888-585-9008, and when prompted, dial 743-463-604. You will be asked for your name prior to speaking. Reminder, if you are joining by teleconference, please mute your phone to prevent noise interference until you are given time to provide public comment. Also, when speaking, please make sure to mute your live stream. Please state your name and item you are commenting on before speaking. Are there any members of the public participating through teleconference that would like to comment on any items not on the agenda?
There are no callers on the line, and we did receive one e-comment.
Okay.
Which I will now read. It is a partial comment. This was submitted solely with the name of Wallace, and this person did indicate that they did wish to speak at the meeting by phone using the teleconference member listed on the agenda. But there are no callers currently, and his comment states a question regarding police wearing masks and vetting complaints to the city. And that's the end of that comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
Yeah, could you repeat the, what he said?
Do you want to repeat everything?
No, just, just the comment.
His only comment states as follows. A question regarding police wearing masks and vetting complaints to the city. So, the, he did indicate that he would be making, he would be speaking live at the meeting via teleconference.
Gotcha.
So I expected there was future comments, however, there's no callers on the line.
Well, if that person's able to get on before the end of the meeting, we'll be able to take their, their comments. All right, item six A is, we'll move on to conditional use permit nineteen dash zero one zero for Santiago Himmit RV Park and modification of conditional use permit six dash seven five mod dot one. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Wood, members of the Planning Commission. Monique Galanese Slater. The project before you is Santiago Himmit RV Park, CUP nineteen zero dash one zero. At the March sixteenth, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, the project was continued to this meeting to allow the applicant additional time to review the proposed conditions of approval. On March seventeenth, 2021, staff received a letter of withdrawal from the applicant. The recommendation is that the Planning Commission receive requested withdrawal. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I'm just curious, what kind of conditions did they have that they did not meet? Or were imposed?
The conditions of approval were related to your operational fire department, public works, and engineering-related type of conditions that would be standard as part of a development project.
Okay. Yeah.
My question is, is in the letter that I, that they gave us, in the agenda, the letter was basically them trying to point fingers back at the plan and saying that it was planning fault for not following through. Is, is it planning that wasn't following through, or was it them that wasn't following through with what was required?
So the applicant, they submitted their application in 2018, that is correct and true. When we evaluated the project at that time, we evaluated it under our minimum code requirements and travel trailer park standards. They were asking for a certain amount of travel trailers at that time. We provided our comments, they came back and resubmitted, and in between those times, there's a few months that pass before they resubmit their plans. We did proceed to have another, or resubmital, and that was in 2019 at this point, May of 2019. Our Development Review Committee meeting, we engaged with the applicant and let them know what all department comments were. We also evaluated the health and the conditions of the site of the existing RV, or the existing park today. Some of the comments that were identified that needed to be addressed, not only would the actual proposal need to comply with access requirements, there were also some other issues such as parking, drive aisle constraints, there would be an unnecessary, potential necessity to merge the lots or not merge the lots. So it was an ongoing discussion with the applicant regarding the, any existing code enforcement conditions on the property. There were some, there were issues where there was electrical and sewer hookup issues, water drainage issues on site, emergency vehicles unable to drive through and main, through the main drive aisles of the existing park, as well as excessive trash and debris on site. So we were working with the applicant to try to resolve those issues before we brought this to the Planning Commission for a recommendation for approval. At that time, the applicant, they resubmitted their plan for a formal conditional use permit. Engineering at that time still found some issues. We needed to, they needed to provide drainage support for the property. So when we did move forward to the Planning Commission hearing of December 2019, we were able to, we had to actually look at it. We had to take a step back and look at the, the development standards that we were applying at that time because it varies with looking at the Health and Safety Code under the parks, the Recreational Parks Act. So the applicant, you know, challenged some of our determinations. So we were going back and forth on, on that, just trying to work with them on it. So at that time, when the hearing was scheduled, the hearing was continued, allowed for us to go back and reevaluate the potential variances necessary. And at that meeting, there were also public concerns expressed that, in regards to loitering on, on the park, trash within the park, and police activity. So those were other issues we had to work with the applicant on before they came back to the commission. At that time, there was a delay, there wasn't, the application didn't come back for another, approximately nine months, and we still wanted to, we still had to work out those issues. So we did, we did achieve a scheduling, getting it closer to scheduling to the hearing. However, during our analysis and preparing the staff report, we realized that also there is a finding that must be made for the conditional use permit, that it has to comply with general plan. And we identified a density issue, so we had to work with the applicant on that, and we worked with our city attorney at that time too, to achieve a solution, which we were able to determine that we could make it work with reducing it down to a certain number of units. So since then, we were working with the applicant, and December of 2020, we're still working with the applicant. We scheduled the public hearing for February, and we've been working with them on the conditions of approval. Unfortunately, the, the type of conditions of approval determined by the applicant would be, would make the project inviolable, and that is where we are today.
Anything else? And open up public hearing. Is the applicant online or here?
Hey, do not show any callers on the line.
And no public comment, we'll close public comment. And comments, thoughts, discussion?
I'm familiar with this place. It doesn't surprise me that this took place. I'm glad that the planning department took the steps they did to get with the applicant to talk about the code violations and say, hey, you need to fix this before you, you know, move on to, to this new application. So very, very pleased to hear the, the planning, the planning department did their job. Thank you.
The question I have, I, it sounded like they had purchased it three years ago, so haven't had it for long term. I just wondered, are they, were they in the process of trying to do upgrades other than this addition here? Or was it, they bought it and just kind of left it as was?
I believe the intent was for the new buyer to improve upon what they had and expand in the future. During that process, they realized there were certain things that the city was requiring based on the current conditions. And some of those current conditions needed to be upgraded, you know, for the addition to occur. So we had some different strategies in how to address that. So at, towards the end of this project cycle, we separated the project rather than combining them into one, and that did, had an additional delay in process of how to achieve that as a separate but connected project.
HP, when you, when you say you separated the project, what do you, you separated the, 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 existing from the expansion?
Correct. The original proposal by the applicant was to expand on their existing project, which was an existing RV park. But as going through the process, there was some density and general plan issues, so we separated the project in order to meet the density factor on the one acre new addition. Separate those two in order to meet the general plan and keeping the existing layout the way it was and not touch them, so the density wouldn't become an issue by adding that one acre.
Gotcha. Did that, did that make it more challenging to make corrections to the existing?
In some ways, you did have to now deal with two different parcels and how to cross drain, how to traverse the water. Access has to be from two different legal parcels versus one project area. So it did have some challenges in that.
Anything else? And my, my, my only, my only thought is that, you know, some, sometimes it's, it's, this is a site that I think, based on public comment, there's been some history of challenges there, and, and so, you know, it's, it's nice that we have, that we had an opportunity to possibly fix some of the older stuff with a new. Hopefully, there's still an opportunity to fix some of the older stuff even if they're not going to move forward with the expansion. So I'm hopeful that, that we're still able to get in there and take care of some of the, the issues that were raised during the public comment. Were there any comments submitted online at all? Nothing?
No e-commerce were submitted.
All right. Yeah, so then we'll go ahead and entertain a motion that the Planning Commission received the requested withdrawal.
I'll make the motion that the Planning Commission receive requested withdrawal.
I'll send it.
All right, the recommendation is approved, five zero. Moving on, attend to item seven A, conditional use permit twenty dash zero zero three for the Shamlu, I hope I'm saying that right, drive-through restaurant. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit approval for the conversion of an existing office building into a twenty-five hundred eighty-one square foot drive-through restaurant.
Thank you, Chairman Wood, members of the Planning Commission and the public. I'm Monique Galanese Slater, project planner for CUP twenty dash zero zero three. The applicant is James Shamlu of J. Shamlu, Inc. The property address is two eight eight zero West Florida Avenue, and this is for the conversion of an existing office formerly title max, and then also prior to that was the Long John Silver's Restaurant. The square footage, the total square footage including an addition would be two thousand five hundred and eighty-one square feet. The proposed hours of operation are for, for sickly M to ten P M, seven days a week. The subject property is located on the frontage of West Florida Avenue between North Sanderson to the west and Kirby Street to the east. The access to the site is provided from Florida Avenue from a thirty-five-foot wide drive aisle which provides access to commercial center. The point six three acre pad site comprises of an existing two thousand three hundred and thirty-one square foot office building and parking. Surrounding land uses include the, the AMF Himmit Lane bowling alley to the north, Mickey's Yogurt to the south, California Budget Motel to the east, and El Pollo Loco to the west. The surrounding land uses are primarily commercial to serve, to serve the commercial needs of the area. The property has a general plan land use designation of community commercial and zoning of C two general commercial. The overall site plan includes a, a new twelve-foot wide drive-through with menu board for ordering, a two hundred and fifty square foot addition all on the north side of the building for a new pickup window, reconfigured parking area with landscaping, new outdoor seating with covered patio shade trellis for patrons, and there's also new sight lighting, trash enclosure, ADA accessible pathway provided to the sidewalk along the frontage of Florida, and a total of twenty-four parking spaces including one ADA space. So the applicant is working, actively working with the selection of a restaurant tenant, is in potentially negotiations with a tenant, but it has not been identified who the tenant is at this time. The proposed layout of the, of the restaurant is, includes the dining room area, customer counter and point of sale area, two accessible bathrooms, designated kitchen area, and two hundred and fifty square foot kitchen addition and pickup window. The landscaping is proposed throughout the site and around the building, in the parking areas and along the frontage of Florida Avenue. Sight lighting is also proposed, and landscaping, a totally nineteen percent of the parking area is proposed. There are no changes to the existing architectural style of the building at this time. It will match the existing, now the addition will match the existing, and any exterior enhancements or modifications to the building in the future, if a tenant came in, would require review and approval by the planning division during the building plan check process and subject to the city's commercial design criteria. On March twenty-fifth, the city gave public notice by advertising in the press enterprise, by mailing to property owners and tenants within five hundred feet prior to the holding of the public hearing, at which the project would be considered by the Planning Mission. And no comments have been received by the public for this. And the recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution twenty-one approving the CUP, subject to the findings and conditions of approval as well as direct staff to, to file with the county clerk. This concludes, oh, excuse me, and the CEQA, this project is also exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act with regards to section fifteen thirty, fifteen three three two, class thirty-two, and section fifteen three oh one, class one of the California Environmental Quality Act. This concludes my presentation. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the commissioner have any questions for staff? So this, this CUP approval would, would lend itself to any future tenant, and then any changes that that tenant may have in terms of landscape or exterior or anything like that would just be approved through the planning department? All right.
If there are exterior changes, like, in, in terms of exterior facade enhancements, could be reviewed in the, through the building plan check process. However, should they wish to re-modify the site plan, reconfigure the parking, relocate in a manner that is significant to the Planning Commission's approval tonight, it would have to come back to the Planning Commission for a site modification.
Gotcha, thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant online, or are there any comments?
There are no callers online.
Well, that was a quick public hearing. We'll close the public hearing and comment, discussion, issues, for this to be quick. entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that one, that the Planning Commission adopt the Planning Commission Resolution of Improving Conditional Use Permit, CUP twenty dash oh oh three, subject to the findings and conditions of approval, and two, direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk.
All right, that passes, five zero. All right, um, shortening. Moving on to city attorney reports.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to give the Planning Commission a couple of updates about upcoming projects and ordinances that may or may not see their way to the Planning Commission depending on how the city council decides to proceed, but nevertheless are relevant to businesses and operations of the city of Himmit, which I'm sure you're all interested in. The first is a cannabis ordinance. Cannabis ordinance needs to be adopted by the city, if it is to be adopted, before June, if we don't want to have to do any additional CEQA work on it when it's approved. There is an exemption under state law for CEQA that expires at the end of June. So I would expect to see a cannabis ordinance coming forward relatively soon. The other, and this came from one of the commissioners who reminded me about it as well, but also came at the direction of the city council after the zealous public comments of a very fine grilled cheese food truck. The city will be looking at a food truck ordinance that will allow the operation of food trucks, and also simultaneously likely looking at sidewalk vending and similar activities. They all kind of go together as, as sort of a spectrum of these, you know, transient kind of business activities that don't take place from a fixed location. I have a lot of experience actually in enforcing sidewalk vending ordinances, and so I'm going to be proposing some changes to the existing ordinance as well that have been very effective in other communities. And, yeah, you'll be seeing those all come forward. And then the last thing, I just wanted to also mention that the city council has asked me to put forward Brown Act training and ABH training. Those can be made available from now as a city council. I will also extend the same limitation to members of the Planning Commission. I don't know if you know what days and times that I'll be putting those on, for the catered lunch, across the city hall, so don't turn down free food. The idea, you'll learn a little bit about open government transparency and others at the same time. So thank you very much.
All right, HP, community development reports.
I don't have anything to report.
Add items?
Yes, we do have a couple items in the future. We're still working on the zoning, western zoning consistency item that will come before you. We just have to get other agencies input, one of which is ALAC. Twenty twenty-one cleanup Z O A, so that's a, some of the items that we noticed throughout the year that needs and requires some changes, one of which would be the rear yard patio cover setback for residential development. We've been having a lot of developments on single-family residential with building setback at ten feet, and when those residents go in and they would like to build their patio, it doesn't give us any opportunity for patio cover construction at ten-foot setback. So we're going to come back and make little changes there to allow for them to have an additional opportunity for a patio cover on their new homes. So some of those items will be coming back to you for a change. There's another sunny car wash on Stetson that's going to come before you, as well as a pizza restaurant.
And last, private commissioner reports.
Commissioner Hill?
I do have something I want to bring forward. So you should have three different photos. Monique, would you like some? Of course, I'm giving you mine, so. Oh, you have extras. There might be extras over there. She has extras. Okay, the first, the first photo that I have passed out is this one here. This is a dumpster at a community property. It's a, it's on Acacia Boulevard. It's a, I guess, apartment complex. Apartment complex? And so this is, you can see all the trash there. And so this is, you can see all the trash there. It's been there for weeks. And it's not getting any better. Number two that I gave you is this one. This is Devonshire Boulevard, near Gerard. And this seems to be a very popular public dump spot. Now, this trash you see in the photo was picked up. On the way over here tonight, there is more trash. There's a chair, another couch, and it just keeps rotating, okay? This one, the third one that I gave you, is somebody dumping some work that they are doing on their property. This is the demo material from their work, and they're just dumping it over to the side here. Now, this is their property, mind you, but it's still, instead of taking this and hauling it away and putting it in the dump, they're just dumping it right there. So my question and the thing that I'm trying to bring forward is what kind of city ordinances do we have on the books? What can we do? Are there some other conditions that we can talk about, maybe modify, maybe bring something forward to the city council? I don't know. I'm kind of opening this up for discussion. You know, the thing about it is, we live in Hemet. I'd like Hemet to be a desired place to live. And this is a constant thing. As I drive around the city, I see this trash all over the place. This is not unique to these areas. And you know, this thing here with the apartment complex, how many rats are being infested in the places next door? You know, north, south, east, west from this.
Are you familiar with the C Click Fix app that Hemet has?
No.
So there's an app on your phone. I'm sorry, HP, do you want to?
No, come on.
There's an app that you can download on your phone, and you can take a picture of these things and you submit it right to the city. And it gets sent to them and they can address anything every time you see it. So I do know that that's available. I also know that there's a cleanup planned on the seventeenth, but I don't have all of the details yet. I just know that that's, like, if you can email me or text me the addresses, I can at least advise to the cleanup that they go to those places because I know that Joe Males is working really hard to try to address things like this as well. Of course, the city is too, the staff. And then lastly, the fire department, I don't know how long it's going to continue, but they have three Thursdays where the fire safety captain drives around and literally just goes to these places and cleans them up because most of them are fire hazards.
Right.
So I know that those three things exist.
Code enforcement, that's their focus too.
That I don't know.
Correct. Code division will go out and they'll survey the property, survey the entire city as they go. Due to current pandemic, they're limited to health and safety concerns at this point. We have addressed them and allowed them to go ahead and address any concerns that might have a health and safety issues and concerns. Some of these issues, like the property owner dumping his own building material down a trench, we can cite the property owner to make sure that they clean up on their own and out of their own dime. We'll get these issues resolved. But again, anytime you see this, the C Click Fix does have a geo-coding so that you don't necessarily have to put in an address. They will know where the location of that picture is taken. So if you submit it through that format, it will be very easy for city staff too.
What's the name of that site again?
C Click Fix.
C Click Fix. Okay. C as the letter or C?
Like C.
Could we put that on the meeting minutes so we have it listed down?
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I was not aware that that was something that we have available. And I agree completely. Just on my way in to the meeting tonight, someone decided that they did not want a couch and a car seat on State Street down by McSweeney Farms, and they dumped it off on the side. I'd love to catch them in the act, but at the same time, it's all over the place, so.
Well, I think one of the things that the property owners don't realize is that through CRNR, they do have a bulk item pickup for free two times a year. So they could utilize that option if they want to get rid of bulky items such as couches and mattresses.
Waste management?
That might be in the county then.
Do you know if they have a similar app to this?
I don't believe county utilizes the C Click Fix, but the waste management themselves should have some type of bulk item pickup just like our CRNR company does.
I know we have a bad problem with littering. They just will drop anywhere they can. The two questions I have in that is, you know, I paid my CNR. They pick up my trash and they do a lot of things, but I've heard that that's an optional situation. Is it, or maybe Mr. Graham can answer this, is it going to be mandatory that every residence have a CRNR and not make it optional because those optional ones will just turn and dump it somewhere that they can dump it and not into the trash can?
Excellent question. Just so you're all aware, the topic of vacant properties and dumping, I've actually referred to my office last week by staff as well. So this is a topic that certainly is traction on the city council. I know they're doing those regular community cleanups to try to get direct action on this. Code enforcement staff are certainly working on it. And it has the focus of the city manager in my office as well, how to come up with some creative solutions to this. I do have a couple of suggestions. It's more for the city council to make a decision on where they go with it. But you know, one of the things I've often found that's helpful for a specific problem like this is coming up with a dedicated funding source. So it's actually someone's job, someone's responsibility to make sure these things get done and that the cost of that is apportioned fairly to the people who are using the service. So there's a couple of different ways to handle that. One of which is especially assessing the property owners whose parcels, for whatever reason, are used as dumping grounds. On one hand, you could say that that's fair, that they leave their parcel open and unsecured. On the other hand, you could argue that they're as much a victim as anybody else. And so, you know, that's one way. Another way is funding it through your existing solid waste collection piece, a small fee citywide that is used for right-of-way cleanup operations. I've seen that model used in other communities. That's a good success. You know, it funds a position, literally drives around the city, making your streets clean.
And that used to be, the city would have owned its own trash department.
Had something similar, sure.
We did it. We went around and picked up stuff, and when it was appropriate, we would assess somebody. But overall, that was a program. And I don't remember exactly how that transferred because I did actually read the contract when CRNR. There were some things regarding certainly bulky items, and I think a lot of people just don't know that that's available for CRNR. But that bulk pickup.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the city would go around and our trash guys would just pick it up. It wasn't something that was special or just one person.
It's traditionally a function of the solid waste franchise. Got a good relationship with CRNR, negotiate the franchise agreements with them. You know, we'll have to look at the agreement, what it provides for. If there's something that the city needs in addition, my past with CRNR, I guess they're generally agreeable to amending the contract. Yeah.
We can use that recycling tax and use that.
You know, there are ways to address it. I would just caution, you know, Commissioner, obviously, this portion of your agenda is for brief comments, you know, and reports. I might not get too deep in the weeds on a discussion that's not on the agenda. But I will let you know, this is on the radar of a lot of people. And I think you're right. I drove by the one on Devonshire on the way here. And I acted the part I'm talking about, so I said, I need to report that, but I didn't want to call up my phone while I was driving. So yes, it will be addressed.
Okay. I appreciate that because we're all here to make our community better. It's not just to see a staff report and say yes to a business, right? We're trying to be a part of the solution and not the problem. So I would, just a real quick comment is, it's like forty dollars to go to the dump, and it's like a thousand dollars for fines for littering. Couldn't we like maybe do a little more proactive and like fine the people that are littering? Maybe fund someone to.
But like I said, I think finding that funding source is critical. And as the vice chair alluded to, you know, it's a balancing act, right? You find a dedicated funding source in one way, you pursue fines and special assessments when appropriate, and all of those together, you're a funding source.
And perhaps with your, as you discussed earlier with the fireworks ordinance and how people can report that, maybe the same system could be used to report people littering in the act? Or, I don't know, where people can report that?
My general code enforcement philosophy is to hold property owners responsible. They're easier to find. They have things of value that I can assess fines and lean against. And fundamentally, that's where, if you want change in your community, you can really start there because they have that vested interest. So all those things combined, I think, yes, lead to a code enforcement strategy that's really effective.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Some pictures.
Yeah. Commissioner Lemke?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Beemstuffer?
No report. I just want to clarify with Mr. Graham in reference to the food truck ordinance, we do not need to make a motion then because that's already, the wheels are turning?
The order has already been given.
Yes.
You're good.
Alright. Nothing reported.
Vice Chair Van Arsdale?
Nothing to report.
Chair Wood?
No, I just, I want to, would like to follow up with staff on the request for some of the planning reports and documents. I continue to get several members of the community inquiring on projects that are in support of the healthy lifestyle such as the Mountain Bike Park and things, some of those outdoor activities. So would love to get some more information on some of those planning efforts and how that tied in with the general plan and how we can then, as a commission, help support that.
Sure.
And if there's nothing else, then we will be adjourned until April twentieth at six p.m.